I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Thank you all for coming. And would you please all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Hang on here. Here we go. Nice and loud, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's, that's, that's pretty crazy with all different cadences there. Rhythms, that's, that's amazing. Everybody is here, Colleen, except for our students. I haven't seen our students come onboard yet.
You'll have to go to Fast Eddie's to see Kenna.
Okay. And how about Josh? Does Josh know about the meeting? He sent me an email a while back and said he hadn't gotten it.
Having, he hasn't gotten what?
Uh, the agenda.
Um, he doesn't get, I don't send it to the students. They're supposed to go on the website and get the agenda. But I, but I did send him and Kenna an agenda for tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. Madam Superintendent, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Could we have the superintendent report then, please?
Sure, thank you. I've got six or seven items here that I wanted to go over briefly. The first one is a hiring update. Later in the agenda, you will find the first two nominees for professional staff positions that are coming forward. This is the time of year that we get what I call unwelcome surprises because people start moving around. And I think in the next month, we will have more of that here in Winthrop. So I would guess between now and the 17th, which is the meeting in June, there will be a number of positions to hire. So just know that. I always joke, I'm the last to know about who's moving around. And some people will call and say, did you know? And if we don't, um, what we can do is if we get word that someone has been offered something and they're just waiting for a board meeting, we'll do an anticipated vacancy if it's, if it's pretty sure. But there's no way I'm going to offer somebody a contract until I have a resignation from somebody else in order to fill that vacancy. So just really an FYI at this point. The second item on my list is the MOU with the town. We have an opportunity to pair and share with our telephone system and network technology. For the school committee, maybe what, three, four years ago, you put in a fairly robust phone system. And we've got some surplus capacity. Jeff Cobroch, who's the town manager, talked with me about how we might be able to partner with that. And I said that we would, and I included that MOU for your information. Number three is the town council vote on the school budget. That's June 1st, and it will be as of today by Zoom. I don't know if that will change, but Jeff told me that as of today, they're planning on a Zoom call. One of the things that I expect them to do that they haven't done yet is to reduce our budget by roughly 154,000. That represents the health insurance increase that we had put into the budget anticipating a health insurance percentage increase. It came in at zero, first ever. And after 20 something years in a superintendentcy, I don't see that very often. But it came in. The school committee discussed that, agreed that that really should go back to help lower the local appropriation. And since the budget had already been voted on by the school committee, the town council will take that action on Monday, the 1st. I wouldn't be surprised if there are at least two votes to try to go beyond that number. I don't think that those two will be succeeded, successful in getting a majority of the council. But stranger things have happened. We will be doing a piece in the advertiser on Saturday, the, whatever that is, the 30th. Ginny's going to write that. I'll help you out, Ginny, as you know, with that.
Yes, thank you.
This week in the advertiser, and Teresa, I want to publicly thank you because you were pretty instrumental in getting this together. We had a couple of our staff write about what it's like to deliver online instruction.
Oh, great.
It's, it's pretty cool. We have a couple of teachers from different levels. The piece was long, and so they're going to run it on over two weeks. The first week will be this Saturday. But it's really from the classroom, and it's, it's pretty cool. And I think it will give the community a nice sense of what has been going on and some of the challenges, as well as some of the success stories. So you have that to look forward to. The Budget Validation Referendum, that's the BBR, that's going to be held at Winthrop High School this year. I met with the town and looked at the all-purpose room, looked at exit and entrances. There's got to be a separate one for each. And given the grade of the building of the town offices, you really can't do that. For those of you who are familiar with the back end of the grade school, where you come out on the playground where there's the outdoor classroom where the table is, that grade there is pretty steep. And for somebody who has mobility challenges, it would be just about impossible to get in and out of there and up that hill. And there's really no parking there. So I agreed to have the BBR at Winthrop High School, as well as any other voting state items for that day. They will be in the building on July 13, 14, and 15. They need to set up on Monday, the 13th. The actual voting is the 14th from 8 to 8, and then takedown is the 15. And I talked to Joel. We have already cleared anyone who was going to be in the building. Most people who had thought about being in the building were not going to be because of the COVID situation. So that is happening. An update on graduation. I sent out an alert today with some updates for families about graduations. And Mark, if I could put you on the spot, if I could get you to do a quick Reader's Digest summary about what's going on with the end-of-year activities at the high school. You gotta unmute.
Matt's gonna help me. I have some show and tell here this evening. So Joel and I have spent three afternoons and evenings so far out amongst the family members in the community delivering caps and gown. So Matt has a picture of our salutatorian in his cap and gown, which was delivered last Thursday. There's Mr. Dow. And the expressions on, the expression on Ian's face matches all of the kids that we saw over the last week here that we've been delivering. They've been really excited to, you know, get their cap and gown. It's beginning to become a reality for them. The other project we're gonna start, which will start next week, we're gonna be delivering lawn signs. And Matt has a picture of our valedictorian's lawn sign. Wow. So DI Design in Winthrop printed these up for us, gave us quite a deal compared to what we were seeing on the website for prices. These are scheduled to be delivered to every senior starting next week. Joel and I went out last night and dropped off Gabby's, and we dropped off Ian's because I'm going to do a press release for the paper, including those two students, both the lawn signs and them in their cap and gowns. So hopefully that'll be out in the paper on Monday. And the other things that we are still working on and trying to get finished up, DI Design is donating the senior class T-shirt. The design was made by Madeline Fenelson, a senior. The project graduation family members have also created the T-shirt that we're gonna hand out. And we are still collecting T-shirts from wherever our students are going to college, as well as any T-shirts that would represent the careers they're going into directly. So that's work in progress. Hopefully, we will have those ready to go out the first week in June. Now Matt has a document. It is a draft document. Joel and I haven't had the chance down to go over this. But our senior activities, we have three events. Next Thursday, we're gonna do a live feed. We're gonna do a senior town meeting. We're doing two student months, our monthly WBOS presentation. I've asked the senior class presidents to speak to the underclassmen on behalf of the class of 2020. And then we are going to, Joel and I are gonna present the academic awards. And when that happens, we're gonna announce the student's name. And each, each, um, cap and gown we've dropped off, we've taken a picture of every student. So if they're being recognized, as soon as their name is read, we're going to put their picture up so that everybody can see them. And then Mr. Stoneton, if he didn't open up his email about 15 minutes ago, is just finding out he's doing closing remarks for that evening. Good, I'll be on the fly. Then Class Night, it's gonna be, it was scheduled for Friday, June 12th, and we're gonna go with that. It's gonna be different, though. We're going to record everything. And Tiff Shaw is gonna put it all together for us, all the pieces. And we're going to release it on our various social media. So as you can see, we're gonna do the welcome. We have two speakers. I'm gonna introduce one. I'm gonna have Joel introduce one. And then we're gonna do the presentation of a community awards by Mr. Stoneton, presentation of the top 10 by myself. And then the presentation of scholarships will take place. And we've asked the community members, organizations that normally present, to do a recording of their presentations and send them to us. And then Joel and I are going to present the ones that are normally handed out by the school. And then I get closing comments of that evening. And then graduation, which we're really excited about. More than 70% of the students approved the Saturday, June 13th program, where we're working with Headlight. They're gonna bring up two big screens. We're gonna have one out in front of the building and one on the west side out by the softball field. So that parents will be given a ticket to drive up over Rambla Hill here. And we're gonna have Winthrop PD monitor traffic. So you gotta have a ticket to come up over the hill. We're gonna pack them strategically so that when we're presenting diplomas, it's gonna make it easier for them to move around towards the back doors of the gym. The plan right now is they're gonna come in on the south end of the gym and exit after receiving their diploma on the north end of the gym. And as you can see, Joel and I are gonna introduce our speakers for that evening, their student speakers. And then, whoops, I forgot to put in Mr. Folk's name. Mr. Folk is gonna give us the three tones necessary to turn the tassels at the end. And then Winthrop PD and the fire department are gonna give us an escort. We're not doing a parade. There's all sorts of rules and regulations for parades. So an escort is much easier. We're gonna do a escort of the graduating class up through Main Street. That's where we're at.
Fantastic.
Wow, the, the organization that's going, that's going into that is unbelievable.
Thank you. It's a team effort.
It's a team effort. Oh, my goodness. What's, what is an escort?
Um, we're gonna have five trucks and police cars in the front and in the back with all the belting whistles.
Okay. Cool.
And just to add a little bit to Mark's piece so that no one is surprised and transparency is as we have always been. First of all, we got very lucky that Headlight happened to have the day. So that's, that's just pointing our favor. The second thing is that the reason it is so late at night is because if it was any earlier, the sun would not have set, and you wouldn't be able to see the screens. So if anyone's wondering why, that's why it's late. And then the other reason it's on Saturday is we figured it's better to go with a rain date next as opposed to first. So if that makes any sense to people, that's why it's Saturday night with a rain date for Sunday. The last thing is, I need to let the school committee know that this is about $10,000. We are taking it out of the, out of the supply line for the high school. We're lucky that we have it. But I don't want to give you the impression that this is inexpensive to do. I used to work with Headlight when I was in Augusta. They do a superb job. They're a real professional group. I think you'll be very, very pleased with the quality of the presentation, but it is not inexpensive. I decided unilaterally that be given, given what the kids have been through this year, it didn't matter to me what it cost. So if people are angry about the cost, that's, they can take it up with me. But I figured it was worth the expense, and we've got the money. So we're going to, gonna spend it.
May I have one more comment? The parents who organized the fundraising for Project Graduation, after talking with the seniors, they've taken the money that they've raised, and they've divided it evenly amongst the students who will be receiving their diploma this, this spring. So that was very nice of them. It's right around $200 per student. Wow, great.
Fantastic.
That is amazing.
Can I have, ask a quick question?
Yes, Ms. Shumway.
Um, in regards to Headlight, is there a way for the seniors to have a recording of the ceremony after the fact? I know that since they're going to be projecting it, is there a way for them to have that, or does Headlight have the rights to that?
So they've already agreed to allow us to have the recording. And Tiff Shaw is gonna do up everything for the families so that they have the recording for that. They will have the recording for Class Night made available. The other piece, we also have a professional photographer coming in who is donating her time graduation night to take a picture of each senior as they receive their diploma, which is awesome, fantastic.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kristen, there'll be a link to, for folks out of state to be able to watch also through Headlight. And the broadcast will be over, I think I saw today, Mark, 88.1 FM. They're just getting clearance today out of Portland to make sure they can still broadcast that so folks can listen to it in their car. But there will be a link that we'll put on our website for folks out of staters that don't want to come quarantine for 14 days to be able to get such as grandparents and so forth.
Wonderful.
Mark, can you talk just a little bit about in terms of moving kids through the ceremony and either small groups and what the size of those groups are going to be?
So as soon as I have permission, well, I don't mean permission. As soon as we get to June 1st, I'm gonna call in about half the class to go over what we're gonna do that evening. But while I have one of the groups in here, I'm going to work with them to determine whether it's gonna be more time-effective to do one at a time and their family, or groups, small groups of four or five at a time with their families to move them into the gym and back into their vehicles and into their parking spots. Joel's gonna be outside helping guide these people in. But we need to determine which way is gonna be, gonna save us the time.
And Mark, can you give a guess about how many tickets each graduate will get?
Each graduate's getting a single vehicle pass unless they come from a split household. And then we'll divide in two.
I just, I think that's important for the school committee to understand that this is not a typical graduation with unlimited capacity. This is very small. So each family, when we think of a carload, is probably going to get, what, four tickets ish, Mark?
Well, so anybody they can pack in that car, we're gonna allow them to come into the gym. But my guess is it's gonna be, you know, five or six people at most. I mean, it's not gonna be three or four cars so that Grammy and Grandpa can come. Probably just not gonna happen. We, we gotta live within the guidelines, see what the governor has put forth.
That's right. The other thing that we're going to need to know and would ask you to pass the word is if of those four or five people who are planning to come, if there are some with mobility challenges, we need, we need to know because we need to figure out how to make arrangements for them. The chances are very good that they will be standing, not sitting, when the graduates come through. That way, we can minimize the amount of sanitizing and cleaning that we have to do in between each student. And so if somebody is unable to stand, we're going to need to know that. So as I said, pass the word to Mark and the folks at the high school to make sure that we know who, who the kids are planning to bring and what accommodations might be necessary for them.
I think the day that I bring them in will be a good time to pull that information together because they'll all be there and I can see them.
That's right. And Ms. Shumway, we're gonna need you that day as well because the dignitaries who are presiding over the ceremony also need to practice, since this is unlike most other graduations many of us have done. So Mark, when you have that date, please let me know so I can let Kristen know. Okay. Any other questions about graduation? The next thing I want to share with you, I think is important, and I didn't have it on the agenda because it's breaking news. I think I told you in early May, we surveyed the staff. We planned to survey the staff to ask them what kinds of professional development would be most useful to them. And I'd like to ask the principals, and I'm going to start with Jeff. Each of the surveys were customized for the building and the level. We felt as though that the different buildings may need different PD depending on the age and content. So the principals did that. They customized their surveys. And Jeff, I will ask you first, and we'll go right from Jeff to Karen to Mark.
Okay. So we had 37 responses at the grade school to our survey. And some of the questions had to do with very specific technology products that they were familiar with and using. But some of the other questions were more general in nature. And 81% of the staff felt, on a scale of one to four, these are either threes or fours. So they felt strongly that we needed to have a common electronic platform. In all likelihood, we're probably looking at Google Classroom, at least grades three through five, and the possibility with the younger grades of going with the seesaw platform. But 81% were in agreement with that. 68% of the staff felt that we needed to have some type of a common communication form that would potentially tie in with that platform. 84% felt that we had, we would need to agree on some type of a common video conferencing platform. And the one that people are the most familiar with right now is Zoom because that's what we were kind of launched into. I think we'll be looking at whether Zoom is actually going to be the best platform for that. Some people were working with some other forms as well, but we need to identify that common platform. Couple of other highlights. This, I was extremely pleased with. Actually, I guess I would say I was surprised after having lived with the whole distance learning for the last eight weeks or 10 weeks or however many years it's been. But when asked the staff at the grade school what their confidence level in providing remote instruction next year was, 81% of the staff were confident that they could manage to pull this off again another year in some form or fashion with the appropriate supports and resources. And 76% of them said that they were comfortable doing it. So not quite as many are comfortable with it, but they're all confident that with the right things in place that they could manage to start this again in the fall or winter if we had to. 73% of the staff felt that we should have some type of mental health training, or the way it was worded in the survey was trauma-informed instruction training. So that's a pretty common theme in terms of helping teachers know better how to apply instruction and how to deal with students, staff, and themselves after having been through sort of this, this traumatic event that we've all gone through. And then the last one I just wanted to go over with you. They all felt that, 89% of the people felt that it was important that we work to provide training in pedagogy and best practices in designing and implementing remote instruction. So that's sort of the highlights. I've got a lot of other specific kinds of things that we'll be looking at in terms of particular platforms and products and things that were effective as we look to those future PD days.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Jana?
I know that you said that you had 37 responses. How many total staff do you have at the grade school? Like, was it that, the majority that filled it out?
Um, it kind of depends. There are, there are about 75 adults in the grade school, about 36 teachers plus ed techs brings it up for around, I'd say around 50 in terms of sort of the instructional side of things. So probably three quarters of the people filled it out.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jeff? Karen, how about the middle school?
Um, our survey, and I want to publicly thank Matt for helping me not only write the survey, but get it out there and, and help me with the results too. Thank you, Matt. I got 22 out of 23 possible survey results. A small staff, of course, and I asked teachers and ed techs to respond. The majority, the biggest response that I got, 81%, was staff saying, we need technology know-how. We need to know what platform we're using, and we need to know how to use it. And that was 81%. And they are leaning toward Google Classroom and Google Meets and also learning how to do things like mass emails where people are blind CC'd. Most of us didn't know how to do that. So we couldn't email all of our parents at one time because we would be sharing their email addresses with each other. And so those are the little hiccups that we've run into, and we call them technology need-to-knows. And it was funny, at my last staff meeting, it was, it was interesting to find out what we didn't know, we didn't know. We had no idea what we needed to know. So that was 81%. 53% of the responses want definite trauma-informed culture and training. That, that was a huge piece for the mental health of not only our students, but of our staff, of ourselves, and our parents. How do we deal with that? I think when it's Mr. Campbell's attorney might talk a little bit about the mental health piece of it as he's offered to take the lead on that. 48% of my staff need to know about online teaching, how to engage kids, how to do this remote thing. And 76% said, we need to find out how are we gonna determine where kids are and where they need to be placed. And that led to the conversation with the staff of perhaps doing the NUIA testing within the first two weeks of school and then taking time to make sure that we have placed those students correctly, which is gonna be a big change for parents that within the first two weeks of school, we may shift everything. We may go to totally different flexible groupings. So we're gonna have to educate our parents that that could be coming. There were quite a few other notables that I talked about, that I pulled out of the answers from, from the staff. Almost 100% of the staff said two of the things that we've learned from the frustration of both students and their parents is that we need to have a common platform, whether it's Google Classroom or something else. We're leaning toward Google Classroom, but that's because that's the only thing we know. There may be something out there. We're not sure, we just don't know. And same thing with Zoom, as, as Mr. Ladd said, we As Mr. Ladd said, we all jumped into Zoom because it was there, but is there something else that's available that's either safer or easier? We don't know. And we honestly need somebody who knows these things. We need technology. We need a technology coordinator to come in and tell us, "These are the things that are out there. These are the things that have worked around the country," because we don't know what we're doing. We have been shooting from the hip, and in my opinion, this district has done a remarkable, remarkable job. The other thing that we did, we modeled a learning menu after the grade school, but what didn't come to our minds, my mind, was every one of our kids at the middle school gets five to seven learning menus every Monday. And when you are asking a twelve-year-old to look at seven different learning menus and figure out a schedule, or even their moms or dads or Grammys, that's, you know, functioning skills that they don't know. They don't know how to do that. They can hardly get from room thirteen to fourteen in the building. Nevertheless, read seven learning menus, figure out what they're supposed to click on, how they're supposed to watch the videos. The big thing that, another huge thing that I took away was, starting day one, we need to teach the kids what they didn't know. Sixth graders, some of our sixth graders didn't even know they had email addresses because we weren't using them in the classroom. They didn't know how to do a Google Classroom. And it's very hard to teach when you have thirty little boxes like we're looking at right now and trying to teach those kids, "No, this is what you do." And when they're up and, you know, drinking their waters or whatever. So that was another takeaway, was we have to really teach our children what the expectations are when we have them in front of us, so that when they're learning remotely, they know what the expectations are from home. So those were primarily the takeaways from the survey at the middle school.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions for Karen? Thanks, Karen. Mark, how about the high school?
I kind of did my survey a little different. I sent out a pre-survey survey and wanted to know what they wanted to talk about. So based upon their answers, I then sent out a survey to ask really, we have two days in June. What do you want to focus your time on? And the result came back that they want a full faculty meeting as soon as we can get in on the eighth, and we're going to meet in the cafeteria so that we can maintain proper social distance. And they wanted just to be able to debrief, talk about what went well, talk about what didn't go well. They also need some time to post and verify grades in the power school. Hours are going to be a little complicated. The year-long classes, the fourth quarter grades going to be pass/fail, but then they're going to have to figure out what the year-long average is actually going to be, because it's based upon the first three quarters that were done numerically. So that's what the transcript will show. Semester classes are going to be just straight pass/fail. Even though third quarter made sure numeric, the fourth quarter being a pass/fail, and there's no final exams, we're going to do pass/fail for semester classes. They also wanted time to just sit and discuss students. So we're going to sit by grades. The kids, the teachers who teach all ninth graders will be in a group for a while, tenth graders, et cetera, to discuss students, to determine which students really truly need to repeat an entire class next fall, starting next fall, and which ones just need some support. And then we're going to meet by the content areas to talk about the same ideas, which students really need to repeat the whole class, or which ones we need to work with to help finish up the class that they're in. They also need time to develop what we're going to call personal learning plans for those students who started out in the distant learning and were succeeding, but then kind of sort of, and I will tell you that drop-off in productivity since the sun came out last week has been tremendous. Participation in Zoom sessions has gone way down at the high school level. So there are going to be some students that are going to need to finish up a project or two so that they are ready, so that we feel comfortable saying that, "Yeah, you've done Algebra I, we're ready for Algebra II," or "English nine into English 10." We do not want to set them up for failure. They also strongly suggested time to meet with parents, teachers, to sit down and talk about, you know, the content that we're going to have to fill in for students so that we can help them see success. And then, based upon Dr. Brown's post a few weeks ago, the eleven-page document, we decided that we need to sit down and talk about what happens if we can't come back. You know, we can't bring in all two-hundred-and-thirty students. We're going to talk about a hybrid, something that's a mixture of students in the school and distant learning. So that, again, we're trying to find the best way to reach all students. Next week, I'm going to have another student leadership team. On the agenda was going to be the schedule. Teachers are also talking about the schedule. You know, right now, we have a very strange schedule. You know, I think I've got it figured out now, but, you know, I still see seniors walking around the school with their schedule in their hand because on Tuesday, it looks totally different than it does on Wednesday. So we're going to talk about that. Also going to ask and think about, ask them to think about surveying their peers on what the students thought about distant learning and what we can do as teachers and educators to improve upon that. And then we're going to talk about, in that meeting, the hybrid model of learning. And for August, the big things were the trauma mental health training. That was unanimous. Everybody felt that we really needed that. And I did volunteer, crazy me, to contact NAMI. I was a trainee trainer in '49 for mental health awareness, and we did a whole day of training with NAMI, and it was excellent. It was an eight-hour day, and it has to be an eight-hour day in order to get our certification, but it was, it was excellent. You know, so I said I would reach out to them on behalf of the administrative team. The other big item that they wanted, almost unanimous, was curriculum work, six to twelve in June, both to continue to build actual curriculum documents, but also make sure that the holes that have been created because of distant learning, we get patched up so that students don't suffer.
Okay.
That would be my report.
Thank you, Mark. That's very comprehensive. Any questions for Mark? I want to circle back to graduation just for a second, and one of the graduations that we haven't talked about is adult ed. And Josh, could you give the school committee a quick summary of what's going on with adult ed, please?
Yeah, we have, we've heard from one of our graduates who isn't, she was kind of a maybe on the participation in our graduation ceremony. Anyway, she finished up last fall. We haven't heard from the other one who finished, and we have a couple students who may yet finish. Now, we are doing some additional testing, so we'll see what happens. The plan, I have a staff meeting tomorrow. The plan was to do some sort of recognition on the same day that we had scheduled before, which, I'm sorry, I'm slipping the dates and have all these dates to remember from two different places.
I think it's the fifteenth.
I think you're right, yes. Would have been Monday, the fifteenth at four-thirty. So I suspect some of the teachers are reaching out to some of our students. I'm hoping that tomorrow we'll have more clarity on how we're going to do this. There will be some sort of celebration. It may not be any kind of gathering. We might do something from the teachers to the students in terms of a video, or it's going to depend, I think, tomorrow on what we hear back from some of these students, and if we're able to finish the testing for a couple of these students. So we're just now able to do some individual testing at other sites by appointment, and folks have a couple tests left. So it's tight.
And do you know if the library is available?
We booked the library for that, but I don't know that they're open for any public events, so that kind of throws a wrench in the potential of doing it there. But it's not a large enough space, I think, where we could, even with a few graduates, I'm not sure it's large enough for us to maintain social distancing up and down the stairs and, and so, and again, we were talking about two people, one who's unlikely, one we haven't heard from, and two who have yet to finish all the testing. So.
That's pretty indefinite.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So that's a long explanation of what we looked at in terms of staff development. Just as a reminder, right now, we're planning on staff PD days, the eighth and ninth of June, and then more time in August. For the eighth and ninth of June, and I will be putting together a letter probably next week. I was waiting for the CDC to publish their guidelines that came out yesterday regarding group meetings. Teachers will be asked to come back into the buildings. As Mark referenced, we will be observing a six-foot distance. I did order a thousand masks, and if staff members would like to wear one, they will be able to do that. Into the regular school buildings, you will not need to take your temperature. However, if you come into the town offices, you do need to take your temperature. Jeff Cobrick has put up a station with a temperature-taking device, and people are asked to take it and record it. The administrators today felt that, or yesterday, that that was a step we didn't think we needed to take at this point with the staff. The primary purpose, and it's been described well, I don't think I need to repeat that here, for the days in June, are to really close out the year. One of the things that the administrators graciously didn't talk about, so I'm going to mention it, is our staff is exhausted. They've worked really hard since March sixteen, and they've had to basically recreate education. And they need some time to reflect and regroup and recharge. So to have some extensive PD in June did not seem like the wisest time for our staff members. Any questions about my report on either the hiring or the staff and PD? All the way down.
All very informative. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you to all the principals. Incredibly informative. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Shall we move on then? Anything more, Dr. Brown?
No, thank you.
Okay. Now that everyone's here, I just want to acknowledge the attendance of Mr. Hodgkin is with us. Okay, wave, Mr. Hodgkin. Who will be taking over as superintendent on July first. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Ariel Boulet as Winthrop High School English teacher. Where is Ms. Boulet? I know she's here. Ah, there she is.
She's here, man.
Thanks for being here, Ms. Boulet. Are you very nervous about this vote? Oh, I can't hear you.
Probably not as nervous as I am about you hearing my children screaming in the background.
Well, most of us are all about children, so I don't think we'll be too adversely affected. Mr. Campbell, would you like to do any?
Oh, good.
So Ms. Ariel comes to us with experience at the high school level in Midland, Texas, six years of experience. And when I called her reference, he said, "It's funny that you called. I think I called her a week or so ago and asked her if she would be willing to come back." That's how impressed he was with her work. So we are excited to have her come on board.
Thank you. Okay, I asked, I asked for a motion, but I didn't get one, so let me back up a little bit. Would anyone care to give me that motion, please? Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, I will move that we approve the nomination of Ariel Boulet.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. From either Mr. Campbell or any of the school committee people, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Bells?
Yes.
And me, yes. Congratulations. Okay, and we wish you the best of luck. Where are you now?
Auburn.
She's in Auburn.
I have a conflict of interest here. You didn't ask me, Chairperson Geyer, what I thought.
No, but you've evidently just chosen to sell us anyway. You have an opening in Auburn?
Yeah, how about that?
Oh, well.
Oh, well.
I think, Ms. Boulet, you have chosen, you've made the best choice, for sure. Did you just have a child scream?
I'm very excited. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. Thank you. Hang on, everyone. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Katrina Booth as Winthrop High School English teacher.
I'll make that motion.
And second?
We approve the nomination of Katrina Booth for the Winthrop High School English position.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Campbell, where is Ms. Booth? There she is. She's been, she's been with us all evening. There we go. Finally got to Ms. Booth. Okay, Mr. Campbell?
As a matter of fact, she has been with Winthrop High School since January. Kat did her student teaching under a combination of Tiff Shaw and Alexis Daskulias. And I was able to observe Kat in the classroom and saw her coming up with some creative lesson plans, very detailed. She made sure that all the students were engaging with her questions. Her strategies were positive, and when I did a reference check on her, well, one of them was Tiff Shaw, but I also called her boss at Walgreens and glow in remarks. She's been a leader there in the pharmacy area, so we are very fortunate to have Kat join us as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Geyer, yes. Yay. Wait a minute, my hammer's been cooling off here. Motion passes. There we go. Sorry, Ms. Boulet, that you didn't get that. Here you go. Your motion passes, too. Okay. So best of luck to you in starting off your career at Winthrop. I can't think of a better place to start off a career. So good luck.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Now, we have, you see for information only, the resignation of Tina Corvo as special ed tech two, effective at the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year. We have a presentation coming up by Matt Shea. Superintendent Brown, do you need to do an intro for Matt, or does he take it from here?
Well, just do a quick cue-up. The history behind this is that late summer, we looked at a number of policies, and they were sort of loosely collected around homework. And this is as part of a policy review study.
And this is as part of a policy review study. Some of the members may recall, we're going through the policy book and identifying those that. Need to be considered because of either their age or legislative events that have happened. And one of the things that we wanted to look at this year was homework. And Matt was asked if he'd put together a committee and include representation from teachers, the school committee, administration, and he did. And we thought it would be apropos for him to give you a summary, since the end of the year has been so unusual, so decidedly different. About where he is and that, Matt, I want to publicly thank you because this is your last meeting with the Winthrop School Committee. So it, it seems like a nice way to end his work with us. So Matt, if you would, please speak to your memo and what you've done.
Sure. So thank you for the, thank you for the kind words. It's, it's been a fantastic year, and I. Learned a lot dealing with people that I never met before, coming from a district where I was there for 11 years, so. It's been great, and I will, I will definitely miss it. And the big thing, one of the big things I did this year was this policy review committee. Way back in September, we started this, and fortunately, we wrapped it up right at the beginning of February. And we obviously have not had a policy committee meeting since then. So when this comes in August, we're gonna, I, I obviously will not be around, so I've asked. Mr. Lad and Ms. Shumway and Josh are going to speak to it. They were in attendance for. Most, if not all, of the meetings that we had over the six months. And we did a lot of things. We talked about questions in the group and why we, what homework is and and why we. Assign it and what it's useful for. And we went through a book study. Called Rethinking Homework, and in February, we, we concluded our meetings. We revised the policy, which the language is right in in the third paragraph here on your memo. It cuts down a four-page, extremely detailed policy into something that really works for all of our teachers and all of our learners. Just things to think about when the people assign homework and what the usefulness is of it. I think the group did an amazing job at asking questions and trying to get them answered. And the discussions, I think, in the group were invaluable, if anybody wants to speak to that that was in the group. But we really knocked it down to a, a, a nice paragraph. And the policy committee will review it when it happens in August. It was, it was a great committee, one of the best committees I've ever been on. We had. Representation from learners to community members, to teachers, to admins, to. School board members, so a good mix of everybody. And that's about it.
Thanks, Matt.
Sure, if anyone's got any questions, feel free to ask.
I was going to ask Ms. Shumway, who was part of the committee, if she would like to weigh in on the work that was done.
Sure, it was extremely informative, and I would have to say that the committee. They took the tasks very seriously and came at it from individual perspectives in terms of what worked best for. Their students and their position, which was very appreciated. And, and we all weren't in agreement at all the majority of the time and. And had a lot of dialogue in order to reach an understanding. So it was a very effective committee, although it was difficult working around snow days and everyone's schedule, but. But yeah, it was a, it was a great experience. One of the things that we discussed. In, in creating the policy. And having it be so shortened in comparison to what it was and not as specific, is having some PD around what. Good homework practice looks like. And of course, now in light of all of the changes in remote learning and and the PD that's gonna be needed for that. Obviously, the administrative team will need to determine how exactly this would fit in. But I think it's important that all of our. All of our teachers, current teachers and new teachers, understand what the expectation is of this newly defined. Purposeful homework, rather than just, you know, spending hours and extending the classroom outside of the school building.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions for Matt or Ms. Shumway? I'm sorry, Mr. Shea or Ms. Shumway? Shall we move on then? Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. We will miss you, and just in case everybody starts turning off everything at the end of the meeting. Thank you for all that you've done, and we wish you the very best, and that looks like a lovely picture in your background.
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah. Continuing business, there is none. Colleen deleted my, my chair report, and so I'm just gonna zip into my chair report. I did attend a Zoom MSMA meeting. That was primarily about special ed and all of the concerns that people have. For delivering the services to ours, our identified children. There's a lot of question about summer school. I think the, the one theme that was repeated time and time and time again was just to make sure that. Everything, every communication with a, a parent is, and every communication with a student is all documented. So document, document, document. Do we have a? Okay. So that, that was, they're struggling with everything that everyone else is struggling with, you know, if we bring in the special ed students. How do we maintain the six-foot distancing? How do we transport them? And. And do all the things that idea says that we're supposed to be doing, so. They had about 70 people attending that meeting. No new business, public comment. So anybody out there in the public, I don't see that we have any people in the public signed up here. But just in case I can't see somebody, this is your chance, just put into your chat the, the question mark, and Matt will turn you on. Seeing none, we'll move on to executive session negotiations.
I move to enter into executive session regarding negotiations pursuant to one MRSA 4056D.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Geyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Great report out of stuff, tremendous organization stuff that you've already done, but you're looking or doing so much more. And good luck as you end up your year. Take care, please. Bye.